With liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Look, Commissioner Brassad, Commissioner West, Commissioner Schulte, Commissioner Meisner, Commissioner Gamash.
Commissioner Gamash, do we have you on WebEx?
Here, can you hear me?
Now we can, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Reiner.
Here.
Perfect, we are all present and accounted for. One via WebEx. And next, we will look for a motion to approve tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brassad, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Any discussion? Seeing or hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold on one second, please. Is this a roll call?
Yes, it is.
No, it's not. My mistake.
I'm sorry.
This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
That item passes. Next, we'll move to item five on your agenda, consider accepting the regular claims paid over $500 and purchase card claims paid for the period ending December 4th of 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Look, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reiner, is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
And that item passes. Next, we will look for approval of the minutes of December 3rd, 2020, and December 4th, 2020, county board meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Meisner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. I do have one correction. On the minutes for December 3rd, get to that here real quick, under those present, it lists Commissioner Gamash as present at the beginning of the meeting and also has him joining at 6:04. I believe that Gamash should say Reiner, because Reiner is not listed there.
Okay, thank you.
So a correction on that present from Gamash to Reiner. Is that correction okay with the motioner and seconder?
Yes.
Terrific. So we have amended motions, or amended motion for the minutes of the 3rd, December 3rd, and as printed for December 4th. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Minutes are adopted. Next, we will move on to Chair's remarks. We have two items under Chair's remarks today, the first of which is to recognize Jam Hop's Gymnastics Factory, which has a location in Ham Lake and another in Anoka, for being named the Dream Big Small Business of the Year. Commissioner Brassad, please tell us more about this special honor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jam Hop's Gymnastics Factory was one of more than 700 applicants for the Dream Big Small Business of the Year Award, which was presented at the U.S. Chamber of Commerce Big Week for Small Business Virtual Summit in early October. This award recognized Jam Hop's for exemplifying the spirit of innovation, entrepreneurship, and individual initiative. Jam Hop's impressed the judges with demonstrated success and leadership in business growth, innovative strategies, community engagement, and employee relations. From what I've heard over the years, this is a great place to work, and their employees feel well taken care of and cared about. Jam Hop's was founded in 1997 and has grown immensely since that time. It is now one of the larger employers in our area. This business has been transforming the lives of children through its athletic and academic programs, and Jam Hop's has a strong focus on giving back to the community, which is exemplified through its donation of 100% of the proceeds from its open gym passes to local nonprofit organizations. Jam Hop's also encourages food shelf donations, as children who bring 10 items to a local food shelf get a free open gym pass. Through this initiative, Jam Hop's has donated $20,000 this past year, and $110,000 has been donated since the program started. Additionally, Jam Hop's often donates birthday parties for local fundraising events, and has given nearly $72,000 in scholarships just this past year to families in need. Children who participate in Jam Hop's programs take time to clean up parks, they perform at local nursing homes, and they even make blankets to distribute to the homeless. To say that this business, owned by Brenda Nolby, is deserving of this award would be an understatement. There's a reason Jam Hop's was selected to receive this award ahead of hundreds of other applicants. It's because Jam Hop's has an overwhelmingly positive, far-reaching impact on children, their families, their employees, and countless community members and organizations. We should be proud to have Jam Hop's in our community, and I know I am. Brenda Nolby is joining us via WebEx, so I'd like to invite her to say a few words about her business's most recent award. Brenda?
Thank you, Julie. Such kind words, I'm kind of choked up. Wow. Yeah, it was very exciting to win this award. With this particular award, $25,000 came to Jam Hop's right before, pretty much right before we were shut down again. So we will be putting that to good years, good use, as we get through this next little struggle here. But thank you so much to all of you for recognizing Jam Hop's. I have to acknowledge my staff, who are really the ones that put in, put in the hard work. They're there every day, they're servicing our customers, our families, our kids, and I'm extremely proud of the work that they do.
Well, thank you so much for the impact you have on our community. It's nice to be able to see you in the community on a regular basis, and we see each other at church, and Brenda has just done a fabulous job with her company, and through thick and thin, is finding a way to make things work. So...
Thank you much.
Thank you for being here, Brenda.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Brassad, and congratulations to Jam Hop's. Brenda Nolby and Jam Hop's have been recognized by several organizations over the years, and the well-deserved accolades just keep coming. The awards given to Jam Hop's are a testament to the vital role this business plays in our community. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Our next item today is to recognize a local resident who has spent the better part of 20 years advocating for the homeless by drawing on his connections in the faith community to provide aid to those who are struggling to obtain even basic necessities. For this item, I'm going to call on Commissioner Meisner to share some information. Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and it is so lovely to celebrate during these challenging times. So, Fridley resident Bill Johorek is actually known as the sock Santa. So in 2000, he and a bunch of parishioners went to homeless shelters, and Bill actually asked, "What is it that you need here?" And the answer was socks. So in the state of Minnesota, the winters are cold and long here. Many of our homeless suffer from terrible wound in their, in their feet and infections. So since 2000, he has every year been doing a sock drive, and has collected to date over 100,000 pairs of socks. They have been distributed throughout the metro area, and I believe too that his, his goal was to collect, I want to say, 20 miles of socks, and he's pretty gosh darn close. It's like 5,200 pairs of socks equals one mile. So, thank you so much, Bill, for all of your efforts and your, and your continued efforts. It doesn't sound like you're going to stop anytime soon. And special thanks to, to Ben Harris and Kelly Johorek, who shared the good work of Fridley resident Bill Johorek. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Meisner, for sharing that account of Mr. Johorek's good deeds for the last two decades. The amount of socks he has collected for the years is truly impressive, and those donations do more, and simply warm and protect the feet of the homeless. They provide people who are struggling, who are struggling affirmation that many members of their community care about them. You know, it is a little interesting that he wanted to collect that many miles of socks, and that he's, you know, it's 5,200 socks, and a sock goes on a foot, and there's 5,280 feet and a mile. So somehow, we're 80 feet short here, but I have a feeling Bill will make that up. Sorry, that's probably mixing metaphors inappropriately. With that, that does conclude our Chair's remarks, and I will ask you all now to go to your additional agenda, where we will have a management committee report followed by property records and taxation committee report. We will start with Commissioner West.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is approving contract C-0008186. It's a lease agreement with HLP LLC for the Ham Lake License and Passport Services Center in Ham Lake. It is for a five-year period from January 1st, 2021, to December 31st, 2025, with one five-year extension option. I'll move it.
And there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reiner, is there any further discussion? I would just comment that this will be going before the library board on Monday evening, I believe. Or perhaps not, this is the license center, the next one will be going before the library board. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
That item passes. Item B.
The second item is contract C-0008187. It's a lease agreement with HLP LLC for the North Central Library Space and Offices in Ham Lake. It is for a five-year period, December 1st, 2020, through November 30th, 2025, and it has a five-year extension option as well. And this will go before the library board on Monday night at their next meeting. And one of the exciting things that's going on is there's a new owner of the building, and he is making huge improvements and making a much better place and fixing things that need to be fixed. And I think our patrons and our employees will be very happy to be working there.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brassad, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner. I will make just one quick correction to the verbal record. You said that it was a five-year extension, it is five one-year extensions.
Yep, yep, yep.
For those that may be watching or listening. With that, any further comments? Commissioner Reiner, then Commissioner Meisner?
Yeah, I just want to bring up the fact, because, you know, a lot of people don't see what goes on with boards that we have. And, you know, when the, this topic was brought up with library board, there were some people on that board that weren't so happy about the terms of the, the lease, and that then prompted staff to further negotiate. There was also, you know, $20,000,000 that was going to be folded back into the lease for leasehold improvements. And as a result of the library board and their concerns, and wanting to have more negotiation done on that lease, staff did that, and we ended up in a better place. So, just want to let the public know that these boards that we have, and there's good work being done, and people looking out for tax dollars and taxpayers.
Thank you, Commissioner Reiner. Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Reiner, for fleshing that out as well. I mean, the library board has a unique relationship with, with the full county board, so I appreciate that. And just, just a question too, so we're, we're voting on this now here at the full board, and then the library board, though, obviously has been discussing this, so that it's just, it's just making it official then for Monday night for the library board. And then, once they vote on it, then it's final.
My comment would be, hopefully, it's just a rubber stamp, but they, they were part of the negotiations, they laid out some criteria, perhaps some of them changed their mind, perhaps they didn't get exactly what they wanted, so we're not sure. We would hope that they find this amenable. And I think they have a preliminary approval, but I would turn to Dee Goodman to respond.
And then, just a follow-up question then, too. So then, both boards do need to approve of it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Dee Goodman, Deputy County Administrator. So, this lease became before the library board two times for much discussion. At the last library board, they approved it, but with conditions that I needed to go back to Jason, the landlord, and come up with some better solutions, which we did do. After that, we followed up with an email to all the library board to let them know of all the changes, what was finally committed in the lease, and they did approve it. It gets approved here today by the county board, and then because the library board meeting happens after, it will go through them as an informational item, because they did approve it already. Okay, thank you.
Very good, thank you for that clarification. Anything else to come before this question? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
And that item passes. Commissioner West, does that conclude your committee report?
That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll move on then to the property records and taxation committee report, and we'll turn to Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The property records and taxation committee met on December 10th, and I have two action items. The first one is an A and B, so they go together. But the committee recommends the county board adopt the following resolutions related to tax forfeited property. Resolution 2020 PRT 9 for 2020 Tax Forfeit Classification of Nonconservation Property for Land Sale Purposes. So there was, this year, about a total, I believe it was a total of nine parcels in total, which is actually less than a lot of past years. And this is very standard to actually reclassify, there's only two classifications, conservation and nonconservation, so that's what this is for. And then, the part B, then, which goes in partnership with this, is then to request the Department of Natural Resources to approve for sale the tax forfeit classification list, which is part A, the nine parcels. So I will go ahead and move that.
There is an offer of the resolutions, both of them before you, resolution A and B, which are 2020 PRT 9 and 2020 PRT 10. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? And that vote is unanimous.
Thank you. And our second action item is the committee recommends the county board approve the following application for repurchase of tax forfeited lands. It is PIN number 35-31-22-22-006, and that is in the city of Lionel Lakes.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Reiner, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Look, is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That item passes.
The rest, oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. The rest are informational items, but I, again, I always like to share that for the public. So we did get another election update, and actually, at that particular meeting, the League of Women Voters, ABC, so Anoka, Blaine, and Coon Rapids, they actually came to give formal thanks for our elections department. So I would like to thank them for their time to recognize our, our elections area. And then, the committee, we was also updated on, there's a contract out for proposal for the, the city of Centerville for assessment services, and another update on the PRT Tyler Migration Project, which continues to, to move forward. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. And if you would all turn back to your regular agenda now, we'll do the committee reports there, starting with the transportation committee report. I can tell you, we met on December 2nd at the Bunker Hills Activity Center at 8:30, and we have a few items for you today. First, the committee recommends approval to enter into an agreement with HDR Incorporated for consultant design services for the rehabilitation and replacement of the Coon Creek Boulevard Bridge over the Coon Creek in the city of Coon Rapids. The rehabilitation and widening of the bridge at Viking Boulevard over the Rum River in the city of Oak Grove. Is there a motion to approve?
Move it.
Motion by Commissioner Look, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Does, would anybody like a information from our county engineer? Commissioner Meisner looks like she might want to, so Joe, would you bring us a little further into this item?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, fellow committee members here. My name is Joe McPherson, I'm the Transportation Division Manager and County Engineer. Happy holidays to everybody. This information, your action item relates to design contract for both of these bridges. As we looked at our program, our highway program over the next couple of years, we, we decided that for efficiency purposes, we thought we'd lump these two together and have one contract with one consultant. So that's why you see the two bridges in there and the two different projects.
Further discussion, Commissioner Meisner?
Mr. Chair, yeah, I, one, one comment and then one question. So, the, the comment was just, I was surprised that one of the companies did, did not give you a quote, and I only say that just because I, I just figured that work would be, would be wanted. So that was just a comment. And then, my, my question is, it was really close between these two bids, I mean, what is that, less than $1,000? So what, I'm just curious what the criteria was then to do one over the other?
Sure.
Joe?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, so, great question. They were very close, and so that's actually a good sign that our request for proposals was pretty tight, and the description and the scope of work was written correctly. That one there, we went with the low bid, which is typically what we do, because as a group, as a highway group, we look at different consultant teams and who can deliver certain types of projects. All three of the teams that you see before you on that action item, actually, all of them can deliver this type of project. So we looked at it as all three are qualified, there was no standing or glaring issues with any of them. There was one, as you mentioned, that did not submit a quote or a proposal, and I think the reason for that is, they're not, roadwork isn't their bread and butter. They focus mainly on bridges, so likely, they would need to team up with another consultant. So they may have just looked past this one and not submitted a quote. But they were very close, all three teams are good, so we went with the low bid.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
And that item passes. Next is under Commute Solutions, the committee recommends approval of a sub-recipient grant agreement with the Metropolitan Council for the period of January 1st, 2021, through December 31st, 2021, for the congestion mitigation and air quality funds for Anoka County's transportation management organization known as Commute Solutions. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Meisner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Questions? Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, my only question is, so this is a grant where we're receiving funds, and so my question then is, why isn't there a, an amount tied to it? Is it just open-ended, or?
We'll turn to the county engineer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. So, great question. This is actually a grant that we've received since 2004, and it helps support our commute solutions person, Megan Matson. And so, we receive 80% of the funding for her position, we have to match that with 20%, which we're currently using transportation tax to do. But the, the amount is roughly $160,000 to the tune of that, and then we match it with 20% county funds. So I didn't include that in there, because it is, it's kind of a, that'll be determined as we finalize the budget and all that type of stuff.
Okay, perfect. So just to reiterate, so it's, it's just because this isn't an actual final number that it's not in here?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. The rest on the regular agenda here is information only. I do have a transmission, transportation chair's report that I can bring to you now. And as the chair of the committee, I am asking you to consider approving a resolution authorizing Anoka County to enter into advanced construction agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation for the reconstruction of Foley Boulevard between East River Road and Coon Rapids Boulevard in the city of Coon Rapids. Is there an offer of the resolution?
So moved.
I heard a number of offers here, I'm going to take Commissioner Gamash's offer.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Does anybody want an explanation of this at all? It's just, it's really self-explanatory, it's just, but Commissioner Meisner?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I was going to say, and this is the project where we're in partnership, or actually, the city of Coon Rapids is, is leading this.
Correct. Joe?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, so we're actually leading this project. This is for the Foley Railroad Grade Separation Project, which takes off next year. And the reason for this grant agreement is because the funding mechanism, the federal funds are set up through multiple years, we have to do an advanced construct agreement, which helps kind of, you know, solidify the fact that the county will pay for the funds until the federal funds become available, which should be available pretty soon after the project starts, so.
Apologies, I clearly, I think I was confused with a different, a different project, so...
In your defense, Commissioner Meisner, this ties directly into the East River Road
That's the one I was thinking of, yes.
I mean, the, the roads will literally tie together at these two projects, and Coon Rapids is leading that one, we're leading this one.
Thank you. That is exactly the way, as soon as Joe started talking, I'm like, okay, yep, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
And that item passes. That does conclude my chair report for the transportation committee, and we will now move on to the human services committee report, and we'll turn to Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our human services committee did meet on December 10th, and we've got a few items here. We're going to take the first two as consent, and I will move those.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reiner, is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
That item passes.
Great. Then we would recommend the county board enter into contract C-0008122, which is an amendment with Bluestone Physician Services for COVID testing and vaccination administration through December 31st, 2021. We're already working with them, and we're just extending this and preparing to do the vaccinations.
I'll move it.
A motion by Commissioner West, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner, is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
That item passes.
Recommend the county board enter into the following employment contract amendments at existing rates, extending the term through June 30th, 2021. And they are contracts with Achieve, Opportunity Partners, Opportunity Services, and with RISE. But due to COVID and some limited services, we just need to extend this, and I'm happy to move that.
There is a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reiner, is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
And that item passes.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
And that item passes.
Next item would be recommending the county board enter, enter Contract C0008281, which is a renewal with Lutheran Social Services for 33 guardianship conservatorship services in the amount of $110,880 plus $6,720 for legal fees associated with these services from January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021. Contract maximum is $117,600. And we've had the need to increase, we've had 28 clients, and we need to increase that to 33. And I'll move that.
There's a motion before us. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner. Is there further discussion or questions? Seeing and hearing none, we will have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
That item passes.
And recommend the county board apply for and accept Ucare Foundation funding, and then in an amount up to $100,000 for housing assistance and COVID mitigation from January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021. And we're very grateful for this opportunity from Ucare.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Meisner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Meisner.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, ju, just commentary, I, too, I wish them luck, and I hope that we get it. One of the unique things about this particular foundation grant is that they're really focused on health equity, and I think one of the things that COVID-19 has certainly revealed is equities across the board. This one obviously would be focusing on housing assistance, but I just wanted to, again, express my gratitude as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
And that item passes.
Recommend the county board enter into contract renewal with Summit Food Service LLC for meals and services at the Community Corrections Institutions per, with per-meals costs ranging from $2, 2.612 to 3.336 based on meal counts from January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2021. We've worked with this contractor for a while now, and due to COVID and the populations in these institutions, we're trying to be flexible to keep them as a contractor, so I would move that amendment.
There's a motion before us. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
And that item passes.
And next we have the Economic Assistance Bill's Resolution 2020-HS22, which I'm happy to offer.
There's a resolution before us. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
That resolution passes.
And my last item for this committee is Resolution 2020HS23, which is addressing the Anoka County Community Corrections 2021-2022 Comprehensive Plan, which I'm happy to offer.
Resolution is before us. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Meisner.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ju, just commentary, I, I mean, we, we spoke about this in the actual meeting, but this comprehensive plan is, well, in fact, very comprehensive, and so we really appreciate the information. And I know that there was a fee addition that I can't remember, I can't remember if Dialin' said that it would be here today, or if we, if it was in there already, but that, that was my only other comment about it.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. Commissioner Brassad, any recollection?
Um, yes, that, that fee is approved by the Community Corrections Advisory Board, so they have to approve it, but it's included in that comprehensive plan.
It is included, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brassad. Commissioner Meisner, any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
That item passes.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Brassad. Next, we're gonna move to the Information Technology Committee Report, better known as the IT Committee, and we will turn to Commissioner Gamache via WebEx.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. The IT Committee met on December 10th, and the, we had one action item. The IT Committee recommends the county board approve purchase from Onvy LLC DBA Intellim in an amount of $455,360.49, a change order of $45,536.05, for a total not to exceed $58,896.54 for SIP, which is the Session Initiation Protocol Telephonic Services. This agreement is subject to the final completion of content informed by county attorney, by the county attorney's office. I cannot see the crowds, I'm assuming Susan Britland is in attendance today, she wants to add more to this. This PRI technology is responsible for carrying voice transmissions between a voice network and a caller. PRI has been industry standard for many years and providing telecommunications services that is still required for state county information transmission. The county recently renewed a two-year agreement with TDS MetroCom for using this type of service where it's still needed. SIP will provide many benefits compared to the previous technology. The county will have the flexibility to quickly expand or contract capacity, often in a matter of hours, and SIP provides a high level of resiliency and local, and load balancing between the locations. Help me to ensure that the reliability and the quality of phone system and of our phone system integrity. I believe this, if I'm not mistaken, if Susan is there, this was in our budget, but it is just for a certain period of time because of, if I'm not mistaken, this is the one that relates to our live, our, excuse me, our elevator system and others that we have to keep intact until a new system can come up. So is Susan there?
Susan is here, and we'll turn to her now. Thank you, Commissioner Gamache.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the county board. I'm Susan Vreeland, the county's IT Director. Commissioner Gamache, you are correct, and back in October, we brought forward a contract, and first of all, I should start by saying you are correct that this is all within our current operating budget. So back in October, we brought forward a contract to continue analog line service here in the county, and that's the technology we currently use right now everywhere for all dial tone service. So that's your telephone at your desk, elevators, alarm service, fax machines, which we are pulling away from fax machines and expanding more electronic write fax service, but analog lines currently cover all of that. In October, we brought forward a recommendation for a much smaller analog line contract to continue covering where we have to use that service, so still in our elevators, still in our fax machines, et cetera. When I brought that forward, excuse me, at that time, I mentioned that we're gonna start bringing forward SIP technology to expand everything else in the county, primarily telephone service, other areas where we could bring in this new technology, and there's a couple purposes for that. Analog service for telephones is going to be going away. We know that, we need to be prepared for it. It's not like flipping a switch, it's going to take a lot of work, and we see that happening in about two years. We need to start shipping away at that when we're not doing our day job, so we wanna start moving on that methodically and at the beginning of the year. The other reason for that is analog service is, it's limited in its flexibility. So right now, with our current technologies for email, for file service to get applications, if we have issues with the primary electronics or machinery that manage that technology, we can move all of that to another site, and that work will continue to happen, you'll still get your email, and we've had that happen, and nobody knows it, so that work continues to progress, and we wanna do that with our phone service. If something happens to that equipment here, we need to be able to push that out to another site. We can't do that with analog technology. Finally, we know that we have a number of government agencies throughout this country in a very activity-filled year in the United States that have had issues with phone lines being jammed, with service not being available because there's so many calls coming in that you call your local government agency and you're getting a busy signal, and in some counties or cities, that was happening for days. With this technology, we will have the ability to ramp up phone service as we need it and bring it back down when we need it in a matter of a couple of hours, not weeks. And so all of that flexibility can be built into the current unified communication system we have. We couldn't do that in our own phone system. So this has been on our radar for a long time, and now we're at the place where we really wanna execute a contract to start going down that path. As it relates to the cost, our analog billing is shrinking by a big amount, which will make tracking that billing easier, but the analog service we have right now for the rest of the county, we get about a 400-page bill a month. It's extremely difficult to track when a phone comes on, when a phone comes off, do we have phone lines that are just out there that we don't even need anymore? With this technology, I will have the ability to very easily, in a system, track what lines are on, what lines are off, what lines can I get rid of. So I actually see this budget line item going down over time with this contract. So in the long run, we're gonna recognize the savings here that we can't recognize right now. So for all of those reasons, I think this is the right path, this is a strategic path for the county, and I think we'll see a lot of benefits we just don't see right now.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Meisner, a second by Commissioner Gamache. Sorry, Mike, you're, because you're on WebEx, you sometimes get second billing here.
No problem, no problem.
Further discussion? Commissioner Reiner.
Yeah, I just have one question. You know, the capabilities of digital is obvious, but I'm just kinda wondering, is there any capability of analog that digital doesn't have?
So right now, Commissioner, members of the board, there are capabilities for things like, I spoke to them earlier, but like for elevators, for alarm service, there are certain technologies that we still really depend on that, and it's, that we have to have it for, that this type of service doesn't have right now. There is gonna be a change there within the next two years. It's gonna be a federal requirement, and a lot likely a local requirement, that we move everything to that technology. So our alarm systems, again, our elevators, when that change starts to happen, there is already a meeting out there with facilities to talk to the city of Anoka about, they're already starting to look at when that code requirement changes, the city is gonna require the elevators go from analog to this new technology, but right now, the benefit is, and the requirement, for those types of service, we have to have analog. So we need to keep it there where it has to be, and where it needs to be technically, but that is gonna all end eventually.
Eventually, new technologies will take over analog completely and have all capability that analog one had, once had.
Correct. But what isn't clear, Commissioners, is that that's all gonna impact us at home, too. And if you have, I have some family overseas that are at an age where they just don't get the whole cell phone thing, so I still have a landline. How is that gonna impact, like, home-type of service? We don't know, but there will be a change there someday.
And in the end, we'll save money as a county.
We will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ju, just my compliments, because, you know, this project, as well, as well as so many others in IT, the timing that you do this, and the proactiveness that you can see what it's gonna be looking like, and to prepare us and your department, so it's not a complete, you know, not surprised, but just a work overload. So my compliments in the timing that you are approaching this, as, as well as, like I said, many other projects in IT. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Commissioner Gamache.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. This, that concludes my report. We did have one small informational item that was regarding a park and rec management software system for the Parks Department, which will bring together all of their, their abilities to take reservations, to bring the golf course in along with our campgrounds and things like that, but more information on that will be coming as that moves along, but thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamache. Next up, we have the Intergovernmental and Community Relations Committee Report, and for that, we will turn to Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We met on December 3rd to review the legislative platform ideas for the 2021 session. It was a long meeting with some really good discussion. We came up with 14 issues that are laid out in the chart there. There is one that, after a little bit of further conversation, and it's regarding the Trunk Highway 65 freeway conversion, we had had some discussion about and voted on to have it be county supports with others. And after a little bit more of discussion and realizing that we wouldn't be able to list it as a priority on our legislative platform, it's being recommended that we move that from supports with others to actively support. So even though we don't have any specific legislation on Highway 65 that we plan to bring in this upcoming session, so that's, that's a recommended change.
I will, as a process, say that we should take a motion to the original grid with an amendment moving that checkmark over. That way, because the only thing before us and in our agenda packet shows the original That way, because the only thing before us and in our agenda package shows the original grid, so I think to fix that properly, we should take a motion on that, a second, and then a amendment.
An amendment, okay.
So is there a motion to approve the original grid that's before you for our legislative platform?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Reiner. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner West. Commissioner Meisner.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, and I just, because this was, I mean, the whole list, we did have a lot of thorough conversation, and I just wanted to make sure that I understood by changing this over, because, like you said, Commissioner Brassad, so we don't currently have a particular piece of legislation, but does this change anything of the current projects where we are truly in partnership, that we're not leading? This doesn't now switch us over to where Anoka County is suddenly leading? And I'm thinking of 99th and 109th in particular, where there's some conversations going around that with joint partnerships.
I think before I even answer your question, I think we should have an amendment on the floor to the current motion.
I'll make that amendment.
Okay, so the amendment is to move trunk Highway 65 freeway conversion to yes lobby for it category, or actively lobbying, and out of the category of supports. And then to directly answer your question, this really doesn't change much of what we're going to do, other than if legislation were to come forward, we would actively lobby for it. We would also list it as a priority of ours, that Highway 65 is our priority, or a priority, in that we want to work with both MINDOT and the cities on that corridor to actively lobby for that.
Okay.
Well, you know, we have that fireplace.
Commissioner Reiner, will you accept the amendment?
Oh, is that noise coming? Yes, I do accept that amendment.
Okay, so that's a friendly amendment onto the motion to move ahead with the amendment as stated. We have the original motion before us with the friendly amendment accepted. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just see Karen Skepper is here, and it looks like she's got some input, so I'd like to hear from her.
Welcome, Karen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. There are several items on our brochure that we produce every year that we don't have immediate language for, but we have it in our back pocket in the event it should come to a point where we can introduce something. So that's what we would be doing with this. We'll have it listed on our brochure. We'll always be in close contact with highway, and if there's an opportunity, we will very quickly turn around something. But we'll know that this is a priority of the boards and be able to move forward with it.
Thank you, Karen.
Point of order, Ms. Chair. I believe, though, also, the secondor of the motion does have to also accept.
Accept.
It's accepted by the secondor as well, so it is a friendly amendment onto the motion, and the motion is before us. Is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, and just to remind her to the public, we did workshop this at length. It wasn't randomly put together, or with any haste, for that matter. There was lots and lots of discussion, robust, and this is the list we came up with, and we'll be working on behalf of the Anoka County citizens at the state legislature to get some of this stuff done. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That will pass unanimously.
And that concludes my IG report.
The Intergovernmental and Community Relations Committee report has ended. We will move on to the Parks Committee report, and we will turn to Commissioner Gamache.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Parks Committee met on December 1, and we have four board actions before you today. The committee recommends the county board ratification of three Anoka County contracts, one for C-0008328 for Kiwi, C-0008329 for Rum River, C-008330 for Rice Creek, for the 2021 snowmobile grant and aid agreements with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. This department has worked for over 33 years and has acted as the local sponsor for these snowmobile clubs in Anoka County that provide and maintain our snowmobile trails. The three snowmobile clubs are in Anoka County, Kiwi, Rum River, and Rice Creek, and they do one heck of a great job. If you've never been able to ride on them, you should take a shot this winter, when and if we get some snow. But they do a great job of keeping these trails open and making for great runs all across Anoka County, and I will move this.
There's a motion before us to approve all three contracts. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
That item passes.
Item number two, Mr. Chair, is the committee recommends the county board to review, the county board have funding for, will be used to assist Anoka County in prevention and reducing the spread of aquatic invasive species, which is AIS, and to recommend that the county board adopt resolution to support for 2020 PRK 10. We have been doing this now since 2014, or since December 2014, and this has done some great things. It came through in the 2014 Omnibus Tax Bill, was signed into law by the governor, and it has done some great work all across Anoka County, all across the state of Minnesota, actually, to help clean up in certain areas any kind of invasive species. We have now been working for a number of years with our local lake groups as part of this, where we're able to give a part of the grant out to them and help them do some of the projects that they're working on. It comes to about $134,000 to $140,000 a year for these programs. We do everything from identifying local enforcement for police officers to determine training needs, to enforce the laws. We also look, it funds some of the people that sit out at the landings to check boats as they come in and out of the different landings all across the county, and also to do prevention messaging to schools and other environmental groups and things like that. So it's been a great program. We want to keep it going as long as we possibly can, and this is just to approve the money for 2021.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
Move to approve.
The resolution's been offered by Commissioner Reiner. Is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
And that item passes.
Item number three is the committee recommends the county board to authorize contracts for $198,500 with Anoka Conservation District, Anoka County Contract C-0008114, for cedar reventment erosion control along the Rum River. The Parks Department has submitted a funding request to the Conservation Partners Legacy grant programs as a portion of a large-scale conservation project along the Rum River in Anoka County that includes riverbanks, stabilization projects on the Rum River, water quality enhancements, and fish and wildlife habitat improvements. The CPL grant will provide stream banks, stabilization in eroded areas, along the Rum River using cedar reventment. This is going to be part of a project that we work, not only with this group, but also some of the private areas, not just public entities like our own parks or cities, but also with private home and landowners along the creek, along the river as well, to fix up areas that are in need. Work will begin in the spring of 2021, with completion due no later than July of 2022. Again, since I don't, give me a camera, so I can't scan the audience, I'm assuming that our Parks Director Jeff Perry is in attendance as well today, so if Jeff wants to add anything more, I would appreciate that, because he's got a lot of information on this subject, for sure, not all the other subjects.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamache. We will turn to Jeff Perry, who is in the room.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, members of the board. My name is Jeff Perry, Park Director for Anoka County. The only thing I would like to add is this project will stabilize approximately 3,600 linear feet of various projects along the Rum River, and this technology, cedar tree reventments, is designed for moderately eroding sites. It's using native eastern red cedar trees to layer those like shingles along the riverbank to stabilize, improve water quality, and improve wildlife habitat. So very important conservation project for Anoka County to protect the beautiful Rum River.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Chair, I'll move it. A motion by Commissioner Look. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reiner. Further discussion, I see Commissioner Look, and then Commissioner Meisner.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I know that the, we kind of structured it as a matching program to match the grant dollars that were coming in. I thought we had matched around $100,000 annually for this. Is this multiple-year type of deals, or how are we coming up with a $198,000, or is that additional funds that we would have given to the Anoka Conservation District aside from the match? I guess I'm just trying to do the financials.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Look, this is part of the overall large-scale Rum River initiative. So of that $100,000 contribution by Anoka County towards the larger-scale project, $13,500 will match these other state funds to total this project amount of $198.5. In terms of the overall extent of the five-year, two-phase project, there are 80 sites that will be addressed along the Rum River. This is addressing approximately 24. So there's both public and private sites that will be addressed as part of the large project, that would include approximately seven miles of stream bank. So there's other state funds that will be used as part of the large-scale project. The Conservation Partner Legacy, which is here, is one tier. The other tier is Lazard Sam's Outdoor Heritage Council direct funding, which we were successful in securing $816,000, and that money will be focused on the more severe eroding sites. The Clean Water Fund proposal is in the proposal phase right now, but that's a larger-scale $440,000 ask to the Clean Water Fund, and then, of course, the county's bringing approximately $100,000 a year for consecutive years.
Further discussion? Commissioner Meisner.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question with the, because it's public and private, so for the private homeowners, do we need mandatory, I assume, permission? Or is this because it's a county project, we just do it and we inform the residents? I'm just curious.
Jeff.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Meisner, great question. We will be soliciting input from private landowners and interests. There's currently a waiting list of over 20 landowners that are interested in doing something on their shoreline. They would be required to bring a 10% match towards the project. The rest of the funding will be provided through those funding sources that I mentioned previously.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache. Aye. Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
That item passes. Commissioner Gamache, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number four, the committee recommends the county board authorize an amendment to grant agreement SB 05733, Anoka County Contract Number C-0006651, to increase the grant amount by $41,011.81 to a total of $366,011.81. The Parks Department is able to complete the riverfront regional park improvement project under the grant amount by $41,011.81, and those funds are eligible for use on other regional parks and trail projects, and the county has requested the Metropolitan Council amend the grant agreement to relocate the funds to the Islands of Peace Trail Improvements Project to supplement its budget. The Islands of Peace Project has a few cost overruns due to some additional work that has required, or that was required for the culverts on the emergency access route to the island, and we thought this is a perfect place to put them so that we could cover some of those overruns, and I'll move it.
There's a motion before us. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner. Any further discussion? I would just say, for those that don't know geographically exactly where this is, these are two parks that are separated by Highway 694, right along East River Road and the river. So it makes sense to move these dollars from the southern park up to the northern park that needs the current work. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
And that item passes.
Mr. Chair, we had two committee action items. One was regarding the 2021 purchase of service agreement for Bandphil Lock Center for the Arts. We will be moving forward with that. We made one small change, and it's a very small change, actually, because we usually make the payments that we pay $50,000 to them every year for their service at the Bandphil, and we usually do it in two different payments, one in January, one in June or July, probably after you were at Metro. All we did in this agreement was add that we're going to have some discussion between now, and we're going to make the payment in January, and then about $25,000, and then we're going to have some discussion with Bandphil Lock on how things are going through the COVID, and then approve the payment for half the next, the second part later on. But that was all a part of our agreement, so it's not a big change, it's just kind of one more step. We haven't had a real sit-down discussion with the Parks Committee and Bandphil Lock, so we're going to do that, just to see how things have been going. We had two informational items that were interesting, and we provided comments regarding the Rice Creek North Regional Trail Master Plan. As you know, the legislature was able to get something into the bonding bill last that was passed, and that was going to help complete a portion of that trail, so we were looking at how that was going to be designed and where it was going to go through the Rice Creek Park and through the different parts of the neighborhoods there to get that trail finished. And then finally, through, with some discussions from residents and from Coon Rapids City Council, we have looked at some possible enhancements to the dog park at Bunker Hill Regional Park. More people are using that dog park every year. We have an agreement with the cities of Andover and Coon Rapids, as they are partners there with us, and they have asked for some of these things as well, and we're going to look at lighting, and also looking at possibility of what we can do about having some water in the area. But for the most part, we're looking at some kind of an agreement between the three of us, so that we can do this in an efficient way and a cost-savings way, and we just looked at some of the plans there, and we'll be in discussion with both the cities to see exactly what it is they would want and pay for. And I don't think, Jeff's still there, if I missed anything, Jeff, be sure to, you know, speak up and add anything. Otherwise, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamache. And Mr. Perry suggesting you covered it well, he has nothing left to add, so thank you, and we will now turn to Commissioner Brassad in the Public Safety Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We just have three routine contracts this morning. I would recommend approval and execution of Contract C-0008331, which is the 2020 Urban Area Security Initiative Grant between the State of Minnesota, Department of Public Safety, and Anoka County Emergency Management in the amount of $183,750, and a term of January 1, 2021, through June 30, 2022, and I'll move that.
There's a motion before us. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
That item passes.
I would recommend approval and execution of the following Anoka County Sheriff's Office contracts. The first one is the 2021 Law Enforcement Contract with the City of Columbus in the amount of $398,942, and a term of January 1, 2021, through December 31, 2021. They are contracting with the Sheriff's Office to include, but not limited to, 12 hours per day of patrol service, five hours per week of community service officer coverage, and 24-hour call and general services, and I'll move that.
There's a motion before us. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reiner. Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Opposed. That item passes.
And my last item is approval and execution of the Violent Crime Enforcement Team's 2020 Grant Contract Agreement, Amendment Number One, with the Minnesota Department of Public Safety, increasing the grant by $235,000 and extending the term to December 31, 2021, and I'll move that.
There is an item before us. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Look. That was moved by Commissioner Brassad. Further discussion? Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is essentially gaining another year's contract. I mean, it's like identical amounts and literally a 12-year addition. Okay.
That is my understanding, but we do have an expert in the room that maybe he would like to share with us.
Chair and Commissioner, yes, this is typically, we've had this grant since 1996, and we go through a whole application process, usually about every other year. This is the second year of that grant, and so instead of going through the application process, they extended the same amount that we had applied for and received last year by one year.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was, just as a follow-up, just curious why it was an amendment versus just a new contract, but then that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
That item passes.
And I would just like to thank Commander First for being here from the Sheriff's Office to handle any questions on public safety today, and that completes my report. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Brassad. That completes our committee reports. We will now move to item nine on your agenda, where we'll consider approving a resolution 2020-139, the appointment of Colleen A. Hobner as Library Director, Contract C 0008346. Is there an offer of the resolution?
Mr. Chair, I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, you know, I've been really consistent about for our top staff positions, posting them, conducting interviews, opening them up. And so I just want to make commentary that, thank you, since I've been here, we've done direct appointments on four major department positions. So the fact that we, in fact, opened this up, conducted interviews, I know in large part that was because of the library board as well. So I compliment that. I'm very pleased to see that. Also to just kind of recognize that this is a person that came outside of Anoka County, because I know the conversation has kind of been to cultivate in-house promotions, which I support, but it is good to also have talent from outside. And then just to thank the staff person who was doing this role in the interim, which is Patty Hetrick. She did this, what, for the last six or seven months in the middle of a pandemic and presume that she will go back to finance. And then I just had one actual question too about the resolution, and maybe this is on all of the resolutions, but the very last resolved, it says the duties of the Library Director may be amended at any time in accordance with Paragraph V A of the employment agreement without affecting the validity of this resolution. And that just kind of struck me. I don't know if that's on every, it is on every contract, and I just haven't noticed it.
I wouldn't say it's on every contract or every resolution, but certainly on a resolution like this, you're saying we can alter the job description without defying this resolution. I mean, that's important.
Because then we'd have to go back and like make a new resolution if it was finite like that.
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. That was my only commentary.
Thank you. Dee, would you like to share something with us, please?
Yes, I would. Mr. Chair, fellow commissioners, Dee Goodman, Deputy County Administrator. So first of all, I do also would like to thank Patty Hetrick. She was our interim Library Director over the past ten months, and Patty has been able to accomplish many great things for our library department during a really extremely difficult time. And so kudos out to Patty, great job. But moving on to my next step, which I'm very excited about, is I'd like you to help me in welcoming Colleen Hobner, who comes to the county with actually more than thirty years of leadership experience as the new Anoka County Library Director. Colleen has served in various capacities for the YMCA, most recently as the Executive Director of the YMCA Greater Twin Cities in New Hope. Some of her duties in that position included managing two hundred and fifty employees, overseeing a six-point-six-million-dollar budget, mentoring and leading hundreds of volunteers, supervising the creation and development of high-quality programs and services, and collaborating with local government, school officials, nonprofit managers, and other community leaders to establish partnerships that strengthen the community. Colleen has held leadership positions on several community boards and committees, including the Robbinsdale School District, the North Memorial Hospital and Clinics Advisory Committee, New Hope Business Network. She also serves as Secretary, Membership Chair, and then the President of the Golden Valley Rotary Club. She also, I think, in the past six months, did a great job as serving as the COVID-19 Initiative Food Distribution Manager for over thirty locations. We are excited to have Colleen aboard. I also want to thank Commissioner Schulte and Commissioner Brassad and Commissioner West, who are part of the selection committee, along with the library board during our selection process. It took us quite a few selection processes to go through, but I think we came up with a good candidate. I believe Colleen will do a great job, and I look forward to working with her. And Colleen, if you'd like to step up? Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you so much for approving my position. I am thrilled. I am grateful for this opportunity to continue to use my skills and I really, my passion for the community and enhancing and improving and impacting and finding what the needs truly are, and to be able to do it in my own community, I'm thrilled. And I really do look forward to getting to know all of you and also really strengthening the library and the county and work together to figure out, to find new ways and how to strengthen and make us stronger. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Colleen, and welcome.
Yes, thank you.
We hope it's a very welcoming experience as you get settled into your new job. You do have big shoes to fill. We had some great library directors here in the past, and as stated before, Patty Hetrick has done a fantastic job in the interim, keeping the, not just keeping the facility open and functioning, but helping it grow and become stronger. We think you'll be a valuable addition to the team, and we look really forward to working with you and doing, just like you said, strengthening that bond between the library board and the county board and how we all work together.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Colleen. All right. Has this resolution been offered yet?
Yes.
It has. So we have a resolution before us. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Welcome, Colleen. Next on your agenda is to consider approving a contract, which is the employment agreement between Colleen A. Hobner, the Anoka County Library Board, and the County of Anoka for services as Library Director. Is there a motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner. Is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Ghamash?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
And that item passes. Congratulations and welcome aboard, Colleen. Next, we'll move on to item eleven, which is committee appointments. And first, we'll consider reappointing or appointing the following individuals to the library board for three-year terms, ending December 31st of 2023. First is reappointing Richard Orpen, representing District One, as recommended by Commissioner Look. Second will be appointing Carol Fast, representing District Three, as recommended by Commissioner West. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Look. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West to approve those two to the library board. Any further discussion? I will just have a quick moment just to thank them for their work on that board, both past and present and future. We appreciate their work. It's not always an easy job. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner West?
I just wanted to comment that my appointment is well acquainted with Matt in his teenage years. She was his English teacher.
And she's still willing to work for us. Commissioner Look?
Mr. Chair, I think she'll seal any of that information from getting out.
Well, that's good to know. It's sealed. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That item passes. We'll next entertain eleven B, which is to consider reappointing Ronald Bolton and Eva Knutson to the Minnesota Extension Committee for three-year terms expiring January of 2024. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Ghamash, second by Commissioner Meisner. Is there further discussion?
It's true.
Seeing, oh, Commissioner Look.
Mr. Chair, I just want to comment on both these individuals. I've had the opportunity to work with them, and both are extremely dedicated to the Extension Committee, working very hard, always there, always contributing in a positive way and helping out wherever they can. So it's good that they want to be considered again for reappointment, and I'm happy because they do a great job.
Thank you, Commissioner Look. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? And that will pass unanimously. Eleven C will consider reappointing Walter Cleeth to the Board of Adjustment for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Look. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That will pass unanimously. Eleven D is to consider reappointing Don Jonas to the Personnel Board of Appeals for a three-year term expiring December 31st of 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brassad. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second it. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That will pass unanimously. And again, we'd like to thank all these commissioners, committee members, board members, for all the work they do. It's, I won't say a thankless job, because we're thanking them now, but it's certainly hard work and the pay is not great. This is, in fact, most of them work without pay, just basically per diem or travel expenses. So thank you for all your dedication to Anoka County. It is truly appreciated. Next, we'll move on to item twelve, which is the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Securities Act, or CARES Act items. And we'll start with consider accepting nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars in additional CARES Act funds and approving the reimbursement of previous expenditures related to COVID-19 health pandemic with CARES Act funds in the amount of twenty-one million, six hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brassad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reiner. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this particular one, the nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars, is because of the funds coming back from the city of Nell then?
Correct.
Okay. And then we then have to absorb it and then itemize it.
Expenditure. Cory?
Mr. Chair, if I may, my name is Cory Camp from the Finance and Central Services Division Manager. What's happening here is we are coming full circle, closing out our CARES Act money. And so because we initially accepted everything in the beginning, and then we've done all these CARES Act items to show where we've been spending the money, this is to kind of culminate the whole act of the CAREs or the, everything we've done with CARES Act over since July, since when we put this in. And so what you're seeing before you is this action will actually say, okay, and we are now reimbursing ourselves for the salaries that we've been talking about, which are many are public health and public safety salaries. And we are also, you know, anything that didn't get captured in a previous CARES Act, you know, resolution is listed here. And so this kind of just comes in full circle and does it. And then we have three resolutions following, which are the amendment resolutions from our initial resolutions in July to set all the categories up. And so now we're finalizing all that. So that's what this is today. So.
Thank you, Cory. Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Ghamash?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Next, we'll go to item thirteen, where we'll consider a resolution amending the allocation of Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act funds, known as CARES Act funds, to the Economic Recovery Activities category. Is there an offer of the resolution?
So moved.
The resolution has been offered by Commissioner Meisner. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Ghamash?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Item fourteen is to consider a resolution amending the allocation of Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act funds for Safety Net Activities category. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Brassad and Commissioner Ghamash. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing no further discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Ghamash?
Aye.
And that item passes. Item fifteen is consider a resolution for the CARES Act Funding to Local Government Activity category. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Commissioner Ghamash has offered the resolution. It's now before us. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Cory and really the entire CARES Act team here at Anoka County.